A compliment to the chef. I, um, every year Joe Leomis, very prominent Italian deli in Pointe Quasimodo. Very, very, very popular, so I was at the party with the owner, and it's Joe and Trump. And he started out with bread. I said, "Listen, there's this place in Langley, there's something twenty-nine." My brother told me recently, Brad, he says, "The bride, right, and I'm from that age, you are..." That's what I said, now, I eat in, and to me, his bread doesn't taste as good as mine. But my brother says, "Well, how much is that, Mr.?" And he's my actual chef. So we should, you don't understand, I'm saying, it's a perfect texture. So he's, so I'm talking to Joe, and I said, "Joe, I want to give you this bread, this is a bread..."
Ah, my brother's like, "What did you say?" I don't understand, you're in the end of the mouth.
I brought him two lobes foot today. He'll get one.
Wow, that's good.
I gotta stay on this side. Well, when I said, "Lake George, Lake George..."
I think that's a structure, yeah.
Yeah. It's out of the air. Two meters. Uh, Lake George was seventy-eight, well, like, two weeks old. Yeah, and, and it was beautiful, it had, had green, so, perfect. The kitchen, the water, it's making more of this place. And usually, up there, yeah, they get, well, we were kind of like, since the beginning...
I think I was looking at like, Swiss, you know, the phone, but I don't know.
I just get...
Alright.
I tried another sound, but then, and then it was like...
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know. I just get... Alright.
It's close, it's not very much, I tried another sound, but then, and then it was like...
Yeah.
I didn't know, I didn't know. I need to do, um, back to the days, like, six years ago. You have diverse, you buy girls, you need love. You have, well, first, actually, mine, of course, yeah.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, leave, uh, leave, uh, leave, uh. But now, this is all...
And these are mine, you know, before they were tiny.
And, and does help with, uh...
Yeah, yeah. You provide it now. I believe, Matthew, he's in favor. Okay. Yeah. Should be. Uh, Justin Thomas, why, you see what I just did? This is a lot. Uh, where do you go, Matthew?
But, but, uh, we're not, we're not, uh, object, he's trying to cheat. You guys did it.
We're on to, to four of them.
Just...
We have a vote. We have a, um, we have a, alright. We have four here, that's fine. And take a picture, take a picture, the four numbers in the audience. That does not have to be like, or...
You make it so, like, you, like, then have to...
You may do that, like, I, I like it.
I know, I know, you're one of the youngest, who's, who's, right there.
Yeah, you want to show up.
You know what I meant, it was, it was, uh, true. Yours was that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, now, I was hoping, wow.
And Justin, how many would that...
Justin, Justin. Yeah, we just...
Okay, sorry. Justin, the door's open, so I can't get you. You're closer.
Okay, okay. We go back home?
Alright.
We go back to your body, you're still on?
Yes.
Okay. Mister Jackson?
Mister Jackson? Mister Jackson?
I got you.
Oh, you mean, sweet.
He says, "This parish from last month's carryover to today."
I got it. He's like, "Burgess." Justin, I got you.
Uh, Chairman, before we take the ordinance, first, on the ten, we're gonna take the first public hearing. I guess, Mr. Schubert has to be at a board meeting.
Mr. Schubert. I said, "Brian's here, everything's been wonderful and happy for him."
Yes.
No, we all, we don't need John to play, we don't, we don't, we don't need John. We don't know.
No, we're...
To give reasons why they're adopting it anyway. So the really only issue is whether this is consistent with the master plan or not consistent with the master plan. What they're saying in here is that inadvertently did not...
No, it's not consistent. We voted the changes from our R M, but it's not consistent.
Okay, then that's what the...
Right, I'm asking you.
This is a scribbler's error, if you will.
Imagine the... Yeah, yeah, I know, I just walked in. I don't see... I think, I think what they were doing with the master plan process, correct or wrong? They simply, there were affordable houses and multifamily dwellings. So we said, "Well, it's multifamily, so let's just put an R designation on it." And that's what we did.
Not realizing that R was restrictive.
Exactly. That's what we did was we said, and I remember T N M actually saying, if there are any properties, if there are any areas that have already been developed based on a certain pattern, we should just revise the zoning to, which simply reflects what's there. And that's what we did. And the R M, I remember correct?
Thinking that it wasn't already R.
Correct, correct. Another reason is essentially anyway, affordable multi- housing space. That's my regulation. It simply just designated what's already there. So if we...
So the work before the master plan is the work that's going to be... Any other questions for your board members?
So is it limited just to the Lakewood Commons, is that correct? Do we change it?
Well, some of the properties owned by NJN that is indicated as used for a big time.
And that area could be an extended section where the...
Leaving out any good question. Was this ordinance adopted, did you change it?
Say that again?
Was this ordinance the change that R M adopted?
This ordinance had first been with the committee, and, oh, we changed it to R N.
Yeah, was it...
That was adopted in the one fell swoop when they adopted the revised zoning act in two twenty seventeen after the master plan was adopted. So a number of changes were incorporated into that ordinance, which was adopted.
I would ask for a motion to recommend, as well as the... I'll move. Second, I'd say move. Second, Mr. Plaswell, second, is roll call.
Mr. Spur?
Yes.
Mr. Plaswell?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisin?
Yes. Number two now, public hearing.
Number two in our public hearing is SB twenty-three twenty-three. This is a major site plan for an office building on Big Hill River Avenue.
Yes, sir. Beginning with submission waivers at the bottom of page two of our G and third letter. Have purpose submission motion planning. What we call the waivers, kind of like concurs manually because we do two hundred feet, and D I S. We can support the waiver for the county planning worth submission for, for reasons stated. We have sufficient information on the plans at this time, therefore we can support waivers B two, four, and ten. And C thirteen, they requested a waiver for the E I S. The applicant sent you, he requested the waiver based on the site having no, no environmental constraints. However, they'll have to provide information regarding potential off-site maintenance, which I'm sure will have testimony on. We recommend those waivers accordingly.
Motion of all engineers' recommendations?
Move.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye. And I continually want under zomni. Variances include, that, door setback, state highway, rear door setback, side door setback. I believe that's it in terms of variances and under waivers. Based on the current plan, class, a design waiver is required for landscape buffering, as well as a partial design waiver for providing curving and walking from it.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe, calling here, a big period of math from the applicant, A V. I'd like to have Mrs. Flannery, for my testimony.
You're a firm testimony, give you one this morning, the truth of all, right?
I do, Brad Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have three exhibits more. A one is a copy of the layout plan that was submitted. It shows the proposed office building with the parking lot associated with it. Eighty-two is a copy of the tax map showing where the property is. It's on the east side of Route nine, just south of John Street. There is existing two houses and office building in need, desperate need of rehabilitation. It'll be replaced with eight-three, and eight-three, as you can see, it's a beautiful office building.
With John Street?
John, John Street is where Mass Effect Baptist Church is, across from the Seven-Eleven.
Is there a car? Is that car just...
On the street's way.
Yes, it's between First Comers and Kemp.
Okay.
On the same side as First Comers.
Okay. Right, talking to Samuel.
Yeah, this is a little, this is a little south of Seven-Eleven, with that area. Yeah, yes.
There's another office building right there, near the...
Across the street, probably.
Across the street.
Everyone is looking.
It's here.
The area.
Oh, that's a seven-eleven.
Yes, that's Seven-Eleven.
So this is a house?
There's two houses and a, an existing office building. All, all structures that have been there a long time and, and waiting for something beautiful like eight-three, which is what belongs on that property.
Don't we have to wait till Route nine gets a little fuelized?
Uh, well, if we wait till Route nine gets fuelized, we have those three dilapidated structures, which just makes things worse. This is a beautiful, readable, the variances when you...
It's a period.
Very good.
It has a period.
But it's easy when you have, you know, the, the, the goods on your side. This is an application that is easy to sell because it makes sense. If I hadn't just, you know, a few months ago presented the best application ever presented to the board, I may, I may have said this one, but...
He wants the grandchildren to work here.
And the, the applicant will be, the owner applicant of the building. So, you know, his building is building, so he can have his own office. The parking exceeds the parking requirements of the ordinance. If we go through the report, it's, it's going to be general office. We're not...
It's better? Voice level is a printing business.
Not bad, no, correct. Um, so we're looking for a minimum front yard setback along Route nine. If we comply with the front yard setback, we have no room for a building. If you put all the setbacks on this property, a building doesn't fit.
What happens in this service with that, or why do we want it?
With, we're, the desired typical section is provided other plan, and we're not violating the desired typical section.
And, and if they do, why do we want it?
They do why Route nine is plenty of room. There's no problem.
They, you don't lose any parking over...
We don't lose any parking. That's, that's, the D O T has a desired typical section, it's a hundred and fourteen foot of width.
Sixty-five? It was sixty-nine. It's not sixty-five feet of midpoint?
No, the total of a hundred and fourteen is the desired typical section. So it's sixty-seven from center line on each side. Sixty, sixty-seven from center line would accommodate a six-lane roadway here. We need a four-lane roadway, we've needed that. What's that?
Seven hundred and thirty-four, seven hundred and fourteen, huh?
A hundred and fourteen. I, I guess I could have thought about fifty-seven, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, you get old sometimes, you know. And when you have such a beautiful project, you, you don't study as hard on it because the eight-three should sell itself. So, but the, the reality is, there's enough room in there, that's why the D O T has for years said with the desired typical section, and it accommodates any roadway, but the board typically looks at the desired typical section and rarely grants any relief to that. There are some times where relief is granted, where, where it's warranted. Here we, we're not asking for that relief, we...
With the fifty-seven, the desired typical section, you have enough room, like four lanes and, and sidewalks?
Yes, yes.
Whatever's needed.
More than what's ever needed, more than that, that will be in my children's lifetime. In my lifetime, we're not going to get the four lanes that we need because they're, for some reason, politic, politics, they're not doing it. But if we got the four lanes, if the four lanes fit very comfortably, you could fit six lanes in this hundred and fourteen foot desired typical section. So as far as the, the D O T coming in at some point and doing something, there's, there's plenty of room. And the, that's something that, that is shown on the plans that, that your engineer reviews. And, and in the review, it indicates we're not violating the desired typical section. Well, the front yard setback is the building because in, in the H D, in the highway development zones, they, they try to go for a bigger setback. And unfortunately, there's a lot of these lots that don't have that depth. And, and that's why the applicants come in and say, "We don't have the depth to do it." We had the depth, we could, we made a building here that maximizes the, the parking, so the parking exceeds what it, and fits a building that's appropriate for this lot.
With the park.
With the park.
As long as you don't violate the Route nine. Yeah, I'm saying, how can we vote on, sorry, does the state highway require? State highway requirement? State highway requires a hundred and fifty foot...
No, the Lakewood ordinance stipulates a hundred and fifty foot front yard setback. The state designates the desired typical section that they need in order to develop. So now the answer is, if, if we comply with a hundred and fifty foot setback, the lot's a hundred and fifty foot deep. That means you, you just leave the buildings on if they're there, which doesn't make any sense. So a, a, a building that's, of this nature, which is the type of building that fits on Route nine, uh, the, you know, the alternative is, is somebody's going to come in and, and do duplexes on Route nine. And, and I don't think you're going to want to see duplexes there.
Well, also, you don't have a good setback.
Well, the property owner has a right to develop their property. They, they could come in and three separate lots. And, and, and just as Joe Kachuba told you last time, there's three separate lots have buildings with certain setbacks. They could come in and say, "Okay, I, I got this setback already, I'm allowed to keep with this setback, and, and I'm going to put duplex on the lot." And, and that's what the ordinance allows.
And Mr. Isaacson? It is eighty-nine feet away. You know, you have the big front, uh...
Yeah, the whole house story. If you look, if you look at the plan, we have a double, double loaded parking aisle that starts at the desired typical section and a building behind it. Uh, and then we have ten feet to the rear property line, which is typical for the setbacks on undersized lots to an adjoining property line. And if you look at the Google Earth, you see there's a stream parker behind the property, so we're not in anybody's face. Notice went out, everybody was at two hundred feet. If there was something being proposed here that wasn't appropriate, when you opened it up to the public, there'd be a lot of comments. I, I didn't see anybody in the public unless they were commenting.
The zone table says that you're eighty-nine feet away from the front setback. Terry says it's eighty-five.
That, and Terry's, uh... Terry's going by the overhang in the second story. We're allowed to have two feet overhang in the second story, so we could technically say we're eighty-seven because we're allowed to have two. Uh, but my testimony was going to go along with Terry's because I, I find it best not to contradict Terry.
He's a wise man.
And, and I, I think when the board looks at the site plan A one and the, and the building eight-three, it, it should make sense. If it was designed to fit, well, that's appropriate there to replace three dilapidated structures. So the, the, Larry, the minimum front setback is indicated in Terry's report.
Right, it's three dilapidated structures that are right now providing maximum plus on this. On Route nine. What is the current... Dilapidated office building? Which has how many cars going to it?
Probably about ten cars.
Ten cars, okay. The other two lots? Fourteen, I'm sorry. I'm revising my previous statement. Fourteen cars, and this is fifty-eight. And yes, technically, you can't build anything here because it's within the setback. Are you going to tell me you're going to put duplexes? It's an R ten.
It's an H D six, I'm not sure.
H D six. I don't think you give a lot of less than a H D six.
Perfect, like, five hundred square foot lots.
Brian, typically, all the commercial buildings on Route nine. Are they a hundred and fifty or they're much less?
If the lots are...
Or Seven-Eleven across the street. That's a hundred and fifty?
I, I don't have the other side of the street, but if you look on this side of the street, just on A one, uh, the, the property on the corner has three hundred and thirty. But we all know that building's not back a hundred and fifty. That, that building's probably twenty feet. He's hard deal, we're on, on the corner of John Street.
Yeah, yeah, he's, yeah, I know where he's, he's on Route nine.
He's not a hundred and fifty, yeah, he's on. So then you have the remaining lots all along here until you get to...
The max, not even a hundred and fifty feet away.
No, no. Uh, if the former nursing home, now school, that's sort of on the corner of Pine and Route nine, uh, that's not back a hundred and fifty feet either?
Brian, what's behind this?
What's behind this is...
Lot, uh... Seven sixty-eight thirty-four point one.
Lot, lot thirty-four point one, it's a three point eight-six acre lot, a majority, and that is a stream parker. There's a stream that comes through the back of this lot forty. Uh, so there's a stream parker back there. Uh, you can see on, on Google Maps that there's some development down by Lakeview, and, and there's a little development to the back of, of this, but...
Right, that's all, it's all wooden area?
Yes.
And you're saying it's a C three?
See, it, it's a C one stream.
C one?
Yes, it, it's far from our property, but it impacts their property. Which is probably why it's still treated.
See, my, my personal thing, the building, these beautiful buildings that fits maybe on the property, but I think you're just going to have to just a real big parking lot on the building. Route nine doesn't Google it then.
Well, it's, it's an office building, and that, that, one of the best uses for an office building is that people come in, they work all day and they go home. In Lakewood, the biggest traffic problems we have, and you hear it from the traffic engineers, is the school time. So it's the, while the school buses are going, while the, the parents are driving to and from school. Uh, if, if this was a retail use, then you have in and out all day long, you have in and out during those periods. Uh, the, the people that work here in the office, they're going to know when the time is, they're going to come in early, they're going to go home late, they're going to adjust their time so they're not there on a deep time. So, and, you know, if you look at the, the parking lot and talk about all the parking spaces, that, that's because we provided enough parking so that there's some place where somebody can park when they come in.
Fifty-eight parking spaces are given one, and that's for people working there, or people who become a constant?
Well, the intent is that, is for the people working there. It's a general office building, it's, you know, it's not a medical office with the in and out. We knew the medical office isn't something that fits there. The general office is what fits.
Educating me. You've got on your, the one that has the parking calculations. The site plan says you've got first floor office space, three, six, six, four square feet.
Yes.
Okay, so how do, and here you've got gross, and then I imagine, is this usable rentable gross?
That's net. Terry's report, which is again what I'm going with, says we need fifty-four spaces. This plan says forty-two, and we have fifty-eight. Terry's report, which goes by net of gross, which is what the ordinance says, says we need fifty-four.
Is net rentable? What is net?
Net, I believe, excludes things like the, the light hallways and that nature. That's my understanding.
Does it, what are you talking about? Does that include the lobby?
The, the net does not include the lobby, but we don't need to talk about that net because we're going with gross, which is what the ordinance says. So we're providing parking spaces for the big lobby. The first floor, the, the three thousand and change is the first floor, it's got a big lobby. The upper floors don't have the big lobby.
Correct.
But we're providing the parking fifty-eight, which exceeds fifty-four, which is the net number calculated by Terry.
So the, so the part, the, the ordinance is what, three per thousand?
Uh, one, one parking space for three hundred square feet.
So it's three point three per thousand?
Yes.
And that, so you're calculating on gross, we actually read to get on net, you're actually be higher than two point three?
Yes. There were going to be sixteen.
That's going to be great for the parking, but I guess it comes back to, you're going to have, uh...
Well, the, the net is really what generates the parking.
Right.
And, and based on the net, the plan said we had forty-two. New lines were smart enough to know that if they only do forty-two parking spaces, when Terry reviewed it, he would say, "Based on gross, you need fifty-four, you need a parking variance." And when they called me up to do the testimony, I would have said, "You're wasting your time, you're not going to give you a parking variance." Uh, but when you go by the, the gross, we need fifty-four parking spaces, we provided fifty-eight. More than the ordinance requires at parking for all of the nonusable areas. The lobbies, the restrooms, the stairways, all of the non, non-rentable areas.
So that would be great that you're not going to have a parking lot. The question is, you could have fifty-eight cars coming out presumably at five o'clock.
But they don't have to come out at five o'clock.
Well, but your, your point is well taken about it's not getting to peak school time. That's well taken. But generally speaking, I mean, Brian, you testified before, like, you know, five o'clock is the peak hour. Why? Because people get off at about that time.
If I may, the net is going to be the actual usage, and thus the park, presumed actual parking space usage will be predicated on the lower, which is providing for excess spaces if there's some kind of overflow, just so that we're providing a more, a more, how shall I say?
Ruby, no, that's the good thing. The good thing is you've got lots and lots of room for the people, and we're not going to have people parking on the grass. That's a good thing. The bad thing is, now you're adding fifty-eight cars, so I doubt the current use generates fifty-five, fifty-eight parking stalls.
You said the current use of, what would be...
The current use is going to be based on net, because when we calculate parking spaces per square foot.
No, no, but today, 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 you've got two houses, you've got a dilapidated office building.
Correct.
So I think Brian said, and what you said, the office building's got ten or twelve, and then mom and pop have two, another two, so you've got sixteen. We went from sixteen to fifty, whatever, fifty-eight.
Fifty-four parking spaces, which is actually spaces that will be utilized on this current plan where anticipating the forty-two, of providing overfill in case of...
Forty-two again, that's based on, you said the applicant's going to drive the entire building?
No, no, the applicant's going to, and, and the applicant would be happy to speak if he'd like. He's not going to occupy the whole building. He'd love for his business to grow to do it, but presently, he doesn't need the whole building. What's he going to do, give him a rent?
You have to be... Let's hear it from...
Right, right, and you can come to test one, if you can approach the legislature, then nothing. We state the name, and then break your comments to the sheriff.
I'm Rick Wood.
Please, just tell you, listen.
E E R K O L Y T Z.
Interesting.
I, I think this literally concerns our traffic. I personally work there recently, I now have an office there, and I travel that before.
You're in the dilapidated office building?
Yes.
Oh.
And I've first time in the dilapidation. Plus, my business, so I, I wanted to have a property originally, the one with my office, and now I bought it back, and I saw the potential to it, and I, I, I've been there, I think probably close to five years already. So we, we do it, we, you know, I have staff, we have probably just next to us, we probably have fifteen cars there every day. From post-students, ten to fifteen cars. We have right next door to us, the other property that we're looking to develop, is three stories, an old residential. And it's occupied.
You have access to any street beside your...
Yeah, that's right. No, no.
Like John Street or anything?
The middle, it doesn't connect, no, no. I go through that, that empty tree in the back connects.
Well, then you come to work.
So I, I, I come to work, you know.
Right, I think you have to come early and late.
My, my, yeah, that's, that's pretty... You know, it's, it's, to me, I look at it like, you come in the morning, you come in late at the end of the day. It's not like adding to the traffic where it's, you know, a bunch of coming and going. It's a type of place, office traffic is a kind of traffic where you come, you cut, it's just a one-time thing at the end of the day. It's not adding to the Route nine traffic. Um, but I think, I think, you know, the, the fact that it's slow, it's like, it makes it easier to come there and in and out.
How much square footage are you planning on paying?
So I'm probably going to pay, there's going to be three floors, I'm going to pay one floor. So at the third of the building.
And every day you have ten cars on an average day?
It's about fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah. Um, depending on how busy the day is, it could be ten to fifteen. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I, I, I wouldn't be investing money in this if I don't think I'm going to lease it out. I think that we put an extra parking because we wanted to make sure that people would be desirable, people wouldn't want to take it. Um, I understand the traffic is what it is, and that's liquid, and when we go with traffic. So it's, it's the cost of living liquid, and I think it's, you know, to put it to the location, for the, for the use of that location, I think it makes more sense. The buildings there are probably, I don't know, one or probably two years old. Um, and, you know, we have, we go back through the residential and everything else, just adding up to the best use to this, to this space. I would be investing money in that otherwise.
Good, thank you. If I can move a little bit further forward?
Yes.
Brian, before we do, would you be, you might be amenable to those little triangle thingies that makes sure you can't take a left across the double line?
I think they're called triangle thingies, Bruce. I think that's actually a technical term.
That's a technical term.
Yes, technical, triangle thingies.
The thing you had in the state of... Where that one came out? You know, that...
In Iowa, in Iowa, to make it right in, right out.
Right in, right out, so we don't have some really...
The applicant...
Saying, "I'm going to take a left at five o'clock."
The applicant is...
Go north or south of Route nine.
And we've got our six as well.
The applicant is okay with putting in a triangly thing?
It's a heavy resolution. Bruce's hand, you know, like this.
Subject, subject to D O T approval. Now, I, I'm assuming D O T would be happy with that as well, but there are plenty of people, and, and I know that because I worked there. But if, as with any resolution, where we're on a state road, if, you know, I would like a resolution to say the applicant agrees, so that's subject to D O T approval.
What is that patch called?
The New Jersey Department of Transportation.
No, 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 the triangle.
Oh, the triangle, yeah, traffic island, to restrict this to right in and right out.
Traffic island. Traffic island. I think that's a traffic island. Okay, please go through.
Okay, so, uh...
What's the rest of the variances in the rest?
All right, so minimum front setback, a hundred and fifty is required. We're, we're proposing eight-five point two feet. Uh, the, based on the six point five foot projection on the second, third floors. Uh, the, the lot's only a hundred and fifty foot deep, so we would not be allowed to do anything. Uh, the minimum rear yard setback, thirty feet is required, we're providing ten. And again, it's to an area that's not impacting it any...
Less than the residential?
No, in the back is, is trees. It's part of a big lot that's impacted by, uh, the, that category one street.
So they won't do one?
Well, they, they can go, they can get, they can get a permit, but, but they'll know this is there. They know right now they have two dilapidated, dilapidated houses and a dilapidated office. They, they know it's there. It's a kind of, uh, big lot that they'll probably do some kind of a buffer averaging or something, and they'll keep in one corner, closest to Lakeview, something that they can build. The, the likelihood of somebody getting a road coming in back here on a very narrow strip that's not impacted by wetlands is dematerial.
It looks like land lot.
The lot behind?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a Lakeview place, and they, they have an easement coming through on, on, on Lot twenty-one. Uh, they, they...
That's a paper street there?
Yes, Lakeview place is a paper street. And, and as it comes out, it is very narrow. There is something back there, you can see that on the...
That's not the one with the cul-de-sac, is it?
No, the cul-de-sac developed.
No. And, and I drove down that little strip one time years ago, and, and I don't get scared easy, but I did it, and I got out of there.
You were...
Yes, yes. I haven't been back. The only thing that would get me to go back is if somebody's doing an application, trying to get housing up within it.
Saying the office building is not enough to get you out there?
Uh, there was no reason to. I thought I had eight-three, I wasn't going to have to say anything else. So the minimum rear yard setback, uh...
Yeah, so just talk about what can be built back there, if anything. I mean, you said it's a C one, so what's the, your strategy on the C one?
C one, you, you need a three hundred foot buffer.
So you can't build anything there?
Uh, I, I'm not going to say you can't build anything there because I haven't studied it. I know that that doesn't impact this property. I don't know how much it impacts that property. And I, I may be back here in the future trying to get some kind of reasonable development there because I, if it wasn't reasonable, I wouldn't be here. Uh, so I, I would be trying to get some kind of reasonable development, and I don't have the board ever saying, "Well, you said nothing to be built here." But I, I, I would...
Brian, you're asking for a setback in every which way?
Yes, because we're in the highway development zone, we have a small lot. Yes, because we're in the highway development zone, we have a small lot.
That can't be developed.
That needs relief to be developed. It's similar to an isolated lot, and it's similar to the last application, where they had a thirty-three-hundred-square-foot lot, and they came in for sixteen-hundred. They didn't meet the zone, but they made sense. We don't have any neighbors that are living here that come in to tell you, you should approve this, but I think when the board looks at the rateable that's there, you've heard from the applicant, he's already in a building that needs to be rehabilitated, there's already his fifteen cars and two houses worth of cars coming, and the houses worth of cars, they leave when the kids are there, they leave at the peak times. The peak times in other towns is when work, going to and from work, the peak times in Lakewood are associated with school traffic.
Mr. Chairman, what I think the board has to do in a case like this is you just have to do the classic weighing of the C-one, of the variances under C-one and C-two, so they're bulk variances they're looking for. And you have to ask yourself, well, is it due to the unique shape, topography, configuration of the lot, size, et cetera? And if you approve it, does it give any, are there any detrimental, you know, any detriment to this own plan or the surrounding neighborhood? That's under C-one, so you do that balancing, and then under C-two. Well, let me get to that, then under C-two, you say, well, do they advance the purposes as dominated by the random variances? And, for example, does it provide a good location for people to work? Is it a good configuration? Does it help the neighborhood? Does it give people so they don't have to drive across town, they can work close to this area, et cetera? And then, then you have to ask, can it be granted without substantial detriment? So it's all weighing. The traffic is built into the fact that this is allowed in this zone, however, that doesn't mean it has to be this size in this configuration. So you could say, well, there's a little bit of a detrimental drag on the basis that it's overdevelopment, and it might create more traffic than it otherwise would. So you kind of have to pull back and consider it and weigh, and that's a test that you have to put in.
And in my testimony, and I'm certainly going to bring up those points to help you make the decisions, and hopefully the testimony will be compelling, and you'll feel the way I do, that the benefits outweigh the detriments. But.
Brian, you have never presented an application, but I still have.
That's true.
He's on a good streak.
And I don't think they change with us.
So Brian, I don't mean to be A D, but, so, let's say you have somebody who lives center of town, is coming to work at nine AM, they pass the Seven-Eleven, they get their coffee, they come out, now they want to get into this pretty building, how do they do that?
Well, they shouldn't go to Seven-Eleven for coffee, they should go to a different place to get their coffee, and then they can come out on Pike Street, make a right, and come into the building. The one thing I found about the drivers in Lakewood, they're smarter than the average driver. They, they know how to get in and out of places, they're a little more aggressive, they, more Lakewood cars get through a traffic light than non-Lakewood cars do.
Because they don't stop once it turns red.
Ryan, this is a suggestion. Ryan, I'm like a thirty, I don't know how to pass that.
Well, and again, as the applicant testified, as in coming into the office, I probably would have loved to have that as the office when FWA was my business, because that would encourage people to come in before this traffic and stay there and work the whole day, so they don't work after the traffic.
Sure you work small time, right?
Yes.
Where's the end of the government? Have any hands? South, North Massachusetts.
So we also need a minimum side yard setback, fifteen feet is required, we're asking for seven-point-seven-five, again, there's an overhang on the upper stories of the building. The, as John indicated, with respect to that, these, in my opinion, would qualify as both C-one and C-two variances. C-one clearly for the front setback, because it's a particular lot that doesn't have a hundred fifty feet of setback. I think when you look at A two, and you look at all the lots that are along Route Nine, and I know the board is all familiar, we all get to see what's on Route Nine, because anytime you're on Route Nine, you're driving slow, very few buildings, very few buildings are setback a hundred fifty feet, so it's in character with the neighborhoods, neighborhoods in character with other developments. I think when, I know when I look at the First Commerce Bank on Route Nine, when I go past, I look at, that's a building that belongs on Route Nine. Route Nine should be a commercial development and not be residential development. There's way too much residential development on Route Nine, and there's people that live there, and they back out, they cause all kinds of trouble. Office people are going to come to the building once in the morning, they're going to leave in the afternoon, they're going to know their way, and to the extent that they can, they're going to avoid the peak traffic periods.
Ryan, the office to the residential to the commercial, I'll see if I have this on that.
Well, we're asking for a, and those are in waivers, which I'll get to next, but we're asking for waiver with respect to the buffering. No, that's not a variance, it's a waiver.
You're going to set it?
It's a sign.
You just.
Well, we have a side, we have a side setback variance, we're asking for seven-point.
Seven-five?
Seven-five, to the side where fifteen is required. And that's, that's only on the one side. We've located the building to the greatest extent practical, so that it has only impact. The chart is wrong. The chart says ten, the chart went by the first floor footprint?
No, it said required.
Oh, yes, 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 I did see that. And that may be the line's first mistake, and you'll learn from that, right?
Maybe.
We all learn our best from mistakes, and, yeah, maybe somebody transposed the numbers, and, but, you know, for the report, for my testimony, fifteen feet is required, we're asking for seven-point-seven-five.
Brian, how big would the building be complying with the rear yard inside here?
You can't.
No, not the front side yard. The rear yard inside, the front. I think the front, I think the rear is thirty, right? If you lessen the building by twenty feet on the back, you probably have a feet on the side. Would it be more serrated than the building bay?
Twenty-two, twenty-eight, so it'd be twenty-eight feet long, so we'd be losing close to half the building.
Plus the side.
Right, and the side, we'd lose a little more.
What if you made it two-story?
Well, the, the side, we could eliminate by eliminating two parking spaces. I would recommend that. We have four more than we need if the side is a problem, and in my opinion, the size would matter, if the neighbor that got a notice that we're putting it there came in and said, hey, that's too close to me. I don't think anybody that has property along here is going to think that seven-point-seven-five feet from the side property line is too close.
Ryan, can you point to where the point is on the application of the footprint? Where lane Route Nine is, is, where would it go from?
Well, the desired typical section is aligned right along the front parking lot. Where the actual road would be, if we do four lanes, the four lane would fit with the parent, right away that's out.
Would it make sense to slide the building down towards Route Nine a little bit, and towards the left, and get parking in the setback instead?
The rear and right home are being hired, you wouldn't care about the setbacks, because they used to be a little densely populated.
Okay, so the property line to the rear and to the side are owned by Rabbi Kennerick, and if Rabbi Kennerick didn't want it, it wouldn't be happening.
I'm not worried about it, I'm worried about the people doing the sell-to.
But if the people is going to sell, so we're going to see the building, and the building makes sense. Anybody that's building here, this isn't a spot that a house should be, it's a spot that another road is building to be, and look at the size of that airlot.
Control point, it's going to be a detriment.
If somebody comes to me and says they want for residential there, and I tell them I don't, I give you, I give you that representation right now. I will not do an application for residential on that lot.
John, did you hear that?
Because it doesn't belong.
This can't go in that position.
But I will, but I will come in and ask for side setbacks, side setback relief, a front rear setback relief on that lot, because it's appropriate.
Brian, what about, to me, the setbacks don't really impact, and it's a beautiful building, beautifully along the lot, but it's just intensifying the use. What if you made it two stories, and made it bigger, slightly bigger floor plates?
Well, the, the ordinance allows you to go sixty-five feet high, so we're not going as high as the ordinance allows. The ordinance allows you to do thirty percent coverage, we're at ten percent. So when you look at this site here, it's not an overuse of that property. It looks, when you read all the variances, it looks bad because.
Right, this was on Cedar Bridge, this would be fine, this would be perfect. If this was on Cedar Bridge, this would be a perfect.
It's an overuse of the building.
It's an overuse of, if this was on Cedar Bridge, this would be a perfect, beautiful, stunning development. But that, just me speaking, it's just, it's a.
Route Nine is a disaster.
It's what?
It's a disaster.
Agreed. So I think we could make the building smaller and de-intensify, I don't know the language to use, de-intensify.
Be less intense.
Less intense.
That's why I asked, do they have access to the John Street?
No. The voice is only. We're not trying to destroy the economics of the deal, but if it's basically, if it's a user-occupied building, you're adding another floor to enhance the economics by.
The deal doesn't make sense anymore.
I agree.
There's no, there's no, we've found every single possible way to use this property, the square footage, the parking, we want a magnified parking area, we go through this like, a whole, multiple.
Part of the deal working, because the board has to be comfortable with the application, that's a big component of the deal.
Right, 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 that's not a question.
But to your point, if they are saying, and we accept that it's credible, that in order for this to be feasible, and for this dilapidated property to be rehabilitated, and this building there, you can weigh that, but you shouldn't worry about the economics either, it's a question of whether, you know, you think that's an appropriate use for the spot, you think it's overdeveloped, and you think they should come back with a smaller application, or something different. And, you know, I think at some point, the board has to make its decision too. You can't every time you say you don't like it, have somebody come back and say, well, you know, we really need it this time. At some point, you've heard enough, and you have to make a decision.
So the master plan in two thousand and seventeen, on page seven, says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth plan principles, and it's my testimony that this is a redevelopment that's badly needed, and it is smart growth, it's a site that, if it met the setbacks, the building coverage would be much higher, the building height would be much higher, and there'd be more traffic involved. The reason that we're here with this building with these variances is because we have a lot size that's smaller than the ordinance envisioned, and I'm sure HD-six and HD-seven have been around since I've been doing business in Lakewood in the eighties, and they were there at that time. Whoever did the ordinance the first time around thought that maybe people were going to consolidate lots, and it was going to develop differently, and it's really inappropriate for the lots that we have, especially in the HD-six zone. So the reason we're here, the reason we have these problems, and the reason we need these variances, is because the HD-six ordinance envisions larger lots and deeper lots than what we have. So the, it is smart growth, it does provide employment opportunities in a close location on Route Nine, which is where you should have your commercial uses rather than residential uses, and it provides that people in an office context can pick when they come in and go to work, as opposed to retail, which is going to have traffic in and out all day. It's not a medical, which, again, would have people in and out all day, especially during the peak period when the schools are operating. The same master plan on page eight, under land use strategies, indicates encourage redevelopment of existing underutilized sites, and this is an underutilized site. The only thing that has gone against it is it's on Route Nine, Route Nine, which the state should have improved back in the sixties. So this property is being impacted by the state not doing what it should do. It's a disgrace that the state has two lanes on a state highway of this nature in Lakewood. It's a disgrace, and this property should be penalized for that. The master plan also, under traffic and parking, it indicates the traffic congestion and the shortage of parking, it says this can be done in part with sound land use planning that promotes reduced reliance on private vehicles through compact development footprints that facilitate access to public transit, provisional local services, and within walking distance of residential areas, and provision of adequate parking. We do that, we have adequate parking, we're on Route Nine, which has buses, people can take a bus, and there should be more buses in the future, that's the only thing that's going to save Lakewood, and it is within walkable distance of a lot of residential areas. So we squarely meet those provisions of the master plan. The municipal land use law, NJ SA forty call and fifty-five D two, under the purposes of the act, indicate some encouragement, this collection to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and it's my testimony that this does this. It also says under G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open spaces, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens, and it's my testimony that this does this. So this, it meets the criteria for a C-one variance, and certainly with respect to the front setback, it meets the criteria for C-two variances, where you need to show the benefits outweigh the detriments. It relates to a specific piece of property, this is a difference that any other property is going to see, it's got three dilapidated structures, it's only a hundred and fifty feet deep in a zone that requires a hundred and fifty-foot front setback. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, those are the ones I just read you. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to public good, with the, looking at the effect on surrounding properties and the character and utility and value of the surrounding properties. This is going to improve the value of the surrounding properties. When the Commerce Bank was upgraded, it was a good thing, it had a positive impact, this would do the same thing. The variances will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan in zoning warrants, and it certainly does not impair the intent or purpose of the zone plan in zoning warrants, and it's consistent with other development in the area, and the benefits outweigh the detriment, and that's the hard part, in my opinion, the only detriment is a couple extra trips on Route Nine, and whether those trips are on Route Nine or not, Route Nine in that area, the repeat is going to be at a level of service X, the rest of the day, you have a building that's appropriate that fits in the area. And again, the problem on Route Nine is the state not doing what the state's job is, they do studies, they do all kinds of things, they know it needs to be four lanes, if it was four lanes, the board would love this application, and there'd be no problem. And it's not the applicant's fault it's not four-lane, this applicant and many others, it's in their reports, have indicated that they would give the land to the state, that the land that the state needs to supply in the road. Lakewood has accommodated that, they've come forward and done that, for some political reason, the state has not done. So it's my testimony that the benefits clearly outweighed the detriment.
Let's talk through, is there anything else to report that you want to do?
Well, the design waivers that are listed, the one that we talked about is the fifty-foot buffer to a residential zone, we really don't have a residential zone, and the second one, a partial design waiver for providing curb along the front parking lot, that was a drafting thing, we don't need that, we're providing curb, all the places curbs are needed.
And so?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the traffic study was submitted, and it shows that the driveway is going to operate at level service B, and we all know that. but we all know that Route nine doesn't. The.
And the light.
And, and the parking, again, fifty A required, fifty four based on the, the ordinance, the landscaping recommendation, whatever, and the lighting recommendation with whatever the board and the, you know, drill appropriate, the applicant will comply with.
If I may just go back to the parking, if you want, just wanted to come to your report that you had spoken to the applicant, and he's telling me that the current usage of the space between the three different buildings, we have now fifteen from this actual office space, and the actual use on the other two are approximately six to seven per building. These are three-floor buildings, they're vulnerable to occupants. So we're talking about, on a general basis, approximately twenty-five to thirty cars coming, going on a daily basis over there, of which fifty percent of those are residential in nature and therefore impacting would not completely more than the current proposed use would based on the office nature. We're talking about a net actual increase of approximately about fifteen or so, which on the actual usage on Route nine, presumably, I'm not gonna be as bold to say that it's gonna be a reduction in use, people coming from less trips, but presumably somewhere, you know, in the same, you know, vicinity or at least the same, it won't be that much more impactful.
The, the, what he's indicating is there'll be less cars, but the residential cars, they don't just make two trips a day. The average residence makes ten trips a day, and, and if it's Lakewood residents, some of them make a lot more than ten. So vehicle trips is the thing that, that creates the problem as opposed to vehicles. And the, again, the office, the office use is typically two trips per day.
Let's talk through the, which ones you.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna comply with all the recommendations.
Number fifteen, what are you gonna bring up?
Yes, the building will be straight.
Okay, so, went through the whole report, everything's okay?
Yes. Any identification sign will comply with the ordinance.
Any other questions for the board members?
Can we still have a left-turning lane going south to go, I'm not a left-turning lane, but, but still make left turns into the property as they have it now? Because I do think people will have a problem trying to turn around and it's right in right out.
I have a think the left side of, the left side is dangerous.
Could you have a fifteen? A lot of people coming from the north, you know, coming in and just trying to find a place to turn around. I know people trying to turn around in their lot, going to the glasses store next door. You know, they zoom past it, they don't see it before they come up to it, and they use their lot to turn around. A lot of people expect that left turn to be available.
Are we talking about Route nine?
I'm not.
Okay, the board can give recommendations, but the ultimate orientation is.
Well, it's the way it is right now.
Yeah.
We're not changing.
Yeah. On John Street, you make the left, you could make the left, there's no left.
Yeah, John Street, correct, but there is a turning lane.
There's a left there?
There's a left, there's a turning lane.
The typical traffic situation there is that it's all backed up from central area. So that somebody that's, that's coming south at that point, and Mr. Raisik indicated, wants to turn in, he's just gotta wait till they move up, and you do have enough light drivers in Lakewood that they let him come in. The, the left turn going out would be problematic, because you don't say somebody's gonna pull out for an accident, but the, the left in is a much more controlled movement. And again, it's, it's gonna depend on what the DFC approves.
The only way to do it is go down John, go down Marple, and then came up high, it's the only way to make a right. How does the applicant go home?
You ask how you go home?
You make a left turn. No prospects, we don't let you get into work, that's easy. How do you go home?
How should I go home, actually?
How does it go home, and how many tents does he have in his car?
No, I'm serious, how, how do you get home? Right road. Right road, buddy? I'll ask you a different one. Do you take the left across, you go left across Route nine, go exactly?
Very common, yeah, very, yeah.
And, and I'll plead guilty, I worked for Madison Tunnel for ten years. Every single morning, I cross the double yellow line to go across Rudy, and we go to Madison Tunnel. I probably wasn't supposed to, right? Right, so I'm just concerned that if we have a lot more people doing what you and I would probably do, well, but it's Route nine.
But, but that's why if we restricted the left turn out with, with items, we could still have the left turn in. And the left turn in is, is the more critical loop, and it.
This is left turn incoming from the north?
Yeah, you're coming from the north.
But it's a double yellow line?
Your left.
You are, Route nine, turn to the. Across the highway you go. Across a double yellow line?
No, part-time coming traffic.
Does Seattle have any difficulty?
I would open up to the public, if anybody's a public rights to be heard, please come forward.
Motion, I'm going to Congress Boulevard, from the better side of Lakeview, New Jersey, O H seven one.
And we have heard it's just someone else's.
I, I do the real deal.
I need you to go first.
I don't know, I was a ring.
He's, he's my man over there.
I had a word urgent matter. Your first testimony before this board, the truth, the whole truth, and I'm.
I affirm, I said, it does, it does it very good. Two things I just wanna say, I mean, first of all, the Voice is a great paper. I just want two, two things right now. One, Mr. Bryan, who I love very much, I'm not sure if you read Scott's traffic thingy. This particular application's traffic study notes that that part of Route nine, the peak AM is eight fifteen to nine o'clock. Even though Mr. Lucas's traffic study that he has is about with the school and Cross Street, but Scott's, which is connected to this application, is more like the office time. So I just wanna ask you one thing, and I wanna make a quick comment, and that's it. Now, I'm just saying, Bryan said that in this case it's gonna be okay, 'cause the offices are not at the school time, the school time is traffic. Just saying, Scott Cannell's MRE thingy, which was submitted to this application, actually, says not like Bryan. But Scott isn't here, so, anyway. Okay, so to get in from John Street, there's no way. Is that, is that what the testimony was?
There's no access from John Street.
What's, what's, where is John Street? Isn't it?
Right.
John Street's there, I thought it was in the. And that small little street, that's a disaster, someone was. Yeah.
It does not connect.
It does not connect. What's along the property line, if, if you wanted to make a driveway there, it's not even.
From there to there, that's other people's property.
Other people's property, okay.
And, and you just have to run it.
Right, no, but again, it's still, the state has this thingy that like left turns from streets, even though they're like a no-helpful street, is better than, than a driveway. Not that we understand it, but, anyways, one question, and then I count. The question is, you testified that I see that this lot is a hundred and fifty feet deep. So with the setback, which we hear it is a hundred and fifty feet, is your testimony that based on the Lakewood ordinance, that this is a non-buildable lot according to the ordinance?
If, if, if no relief was granted, it would be non-buildable.
That, that's what I'm saying, so that's.
But that's different than being a non-buildable lot.
You, you could build on it right now, you just have to stay in the same footprint that's existing.
Well, you, you can't, as, as indicated in the last one, you're allowed to keep the setbacks that you have.
Right.
And, and just not violate.
And go back further.
Yes.
I'm gonna clarify my question, if there was nothing on this land, like by Eagle Ridge, when I said there was nothing there, there was, there was undeveloped land, and so you don't have the conformed, existing non-conformities. Is your testimony that this would be a non-buildable lot without getting the release?
But, if, if you have no, if no relief was granted, you would not be allowed to build it.
And, in such a case, you could still go to the planning board, not to the zoning board?
Yes.
Okay, fine, that was my question, and my comment, just 'cause there was one question, I finally got the answer. You gave one answer on this one, sir? It's okay, this board is way better than the other, and, and I can get there. Just my comment about, I see the parking is right up to the front door, and there's no fire lane, there's no drop, nothing, nothing. I just wanna point out, just because Bryan said that the people are best off parking and staying at work the whole day, so just, you know, for a guy who wants to buy lunch and get a drop-off, the guy has to drive through the parking lot and hang up his own cars. In, in the future, now, it's not a question, just a count, but in the future, such an office, Bryan, if you design or are asked about such a thing. Right, right, like I, I know we talked about it by Cedar Bridge area, and on the there, they actually did do it. Just a comment, not a question. Thank you, and I wish you luck, I wish you luck, the Voice is a great, anyway, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else to talk, like if you heard, please come forward, seeing on or close to public.
Quick question. One second, before we make a question. So if the voice would not, if we, if we not, you had to get out to other people to use, how, how big would the building have to be? If it's just for use by the voice itself, how, how big, how much space would you need?
I wouldn't build a building.
Saying maybe two floors, the way it is right now?
The, the voice is what we forget about, I think it was four thousand, three to four thousand square feet. It was four thousand square feet, that's not easy. So, build something inside, build anything, whatever you're doing.
And the other people in the building, you have any idea who you would have in the building with you?
No.
You don't have any other people?
Well, I mentioned, maybe, you know, nothing.
Say like similar type of businesses that are ninety-five.
That's why. Sorry?
Not medical.
And there's no basement, correct?
No, no.
No, simple.
If you add one, that's the requirement for the hill, I'll have it.
So, let's make a motion, if I have any clarity on the, so, if you're coming south on Route nine, you're saying it would be prudent and not unsafe to allow people to turn left into property?
Correct.
But we're all agreeing, turning left from the property would be unsafe. So it's not my triangle thingy, what do you call that then?
Well, it's still a traffic island.
Traffic island.
It's just a different traffic island.
So, so give me the, give me the right language, so I'm making it right, what?
Instead of being one of these, it's one of these.
And so, give me the right language.
Well, this one prohibits you from making that left turn.
So a traffic island that prevents right turn only coming out?
Yeah, right, right only out.
Right only out.
Traffic controlled device.
A traffic controlled device that allows right turns out only. What he's saying, that's not, that's not the danger.
Full service coming in.
Full service coming in, now I understand it. But right would be strict, just so we don't have geniuses trying to cut cross-traffic.
Subject to D F C approval, yes.
What else?
I.
You plan, you think else?
I'll make a motion, yeah, so that we, as long as it thing has one of those that, I'm gonna make a motion.
Steps up substantially, not something like that cross-traffic.
A real jump, right?
Yeah, full curve.
We're using ones that put a curve, they're not problem.
No, somebody will die, somebody will die.
Mr. Stern, tonight, for clarification, we had this happen before. The DOT does not want the island, and the DOT wants a full movement, then we have, we come back here for the board to act on it?
No.
Because yours, I'm just asking because you seem to be very specific.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I was a virtue.
We're, we're subject to the DOT, they supersede us.
So therefore it would be approved without the island? I, I don't know if it needs an island, I think you could just have a signage that says right turn only. No, 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 no. They're proud, man, they're proud. No, no. I said, I said. It's like a red light, it's recommended, yes. I've seen people with an island make a left turn also, it's not gonna stop people, they wanna do it.
Red lines, red lines are recommended, signage are not even allowed here. Okay, so this is, turn, make a motion. But, once I, if, if the state, if we did require, and the state said, no, we don't, we won't, and then he said that he didn't, to come back, what could be?
Well, then you could, hey, right, we deny it, I suppose, and say that that condition was not met. Or you could say this is what the board would like, however the board understands that the DOT has final judgment on that.
Why would the, would the state have a problem with an island?
I, we, we just had this issue come up before, where the board was trying to put input on determining movements on a state road, and the board was not happy on saying that, and to say, I think if the board, if the state decides something different, does the board want to?
As indicated.
I'm just trying to comp, simplify things for later down the line.
We want it to come back. I, I, I don't know if the applicant would have to come back, but can we review what the state says to us, with that explanation?
Not coming to the board unless the applicant.
The applicant would agree to submit whatever the DOT approves to the board, so the board would at least be cognizant of, of what happened.
Well, I, I mean, Bruce, I'd like you to add to your motion, that if they don't approve the, the curve the way we want it, that they should come back to the board. I would, I would want the opportunity to re.
I, I would think so, I mean, this is, somebody takes a left across Route, it could be, let's see.
At, at the zoning board, I made the mistake of saying that's why you get the big bucks. And, and that was a hunting connotation, the big bucks to the. But, but that's, that's.
I'll, I'll second motion of the board, I'll second motion.
Just briefly, I'll make a motion again.
Okay.
Were you making, were allowing left turns into the parking lot and no, no help, only a right turn? Before you add.
I accept your amendment, I think that's the right.
No, right, no, but besides that, I, I actually like what Mr. Stein said. I wouldn't mind the elimination of one or two, yeah, one or two parking spots to, to create delivery area. It's not, it's not the worst. It's just this, what is it, the strip. The strip. Let's say somebody's bringing lunch, let's say FedEx is coming, let's say U S is coming.
We, we have a site that, that's why we put extra parking in, so that we could designate one for delivery.
Just like a designated.
Yes, yep. Fifty-minute parking for the delivery. Deliveries or Frank Hops.
Is there a fire lane there? You have a fire lane around the building?
How many spots do we want to put?
One seat for one spot.
Yeah, or two spots, if, if it's a truck, then we say.
Okay, two spots, you will put two spots, two spots next to this.
Whatever was said, you agree with that motion?
I agree with my Steve coffee.
Okay, now, we have a second motion, the H S A. We have a second motion. And we second the motion as opposed, if we do this. Okay, so, Mr. Jackson, you have a whole motion?
Not exactly.
You are getting paid the big bucks.
Basically, our motion is, don't pressure, we are allowing.
Let's go back to the videotape.
This worker, he was having himself.
We're allowing left turn.
Left turn and a right and left.
And upon going out only a right turn, and it's subject to DOT, but if, should the DOT deny it, then we, they should come back here, we should see, we should see what, what we, what shall we decide?
All right, resolution, if the board adopts this motion, will specifically state that they have to come back if DOT does not approve the exact configuration approved by the board, because that would do possible disruption to the premise of the approval.
Just to clarify, if the DOT tells us right in, right out, so we can't have that left, then you don't need to see us.
Well, you.
Yeah, they just can right in, right out, yes. It's only if.
It could be more restrictive, but not less.
Correct.
That's one word.
And the only other thing, Mr. Jackson, was to add on that one or two parking spaces should be designated for delivery use, preferably two spaces that are.
Two spaces.
So that it's, so that it's longer, not.
And is there a fire lane in front, that's always got to be on this?
No.
Who do you have your mom's special breaks? I don't have your mom's delivery, but.
I heard the board attorney's.
Ten, oh, what would you call a ten-minute parking home in, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a parking.
Okay, we have, we have a little, well, fifteen minutes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinsberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kerchwell?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
So, in full disclosure, I have worked for the Voice in the past, but I'm saying yes on that as well.
And Mr. Raisik did address that with the, he can, and in my opinion, that is not a conflict. He hasn't worked with him in five years, and he stated that would not affect his judgment in any way. He has a partner in five years, and he stated that would not affect his judgment in any way, shape, form. If Dr. Kitty are interested in this application, I, I, I already have no conflict, and I'm agreeing with the board.
Mr. Berkowitz. Mr. Berkowitz. Well, thank you very much, it's a beautiful application. And I wish you good luck. The only thing I have to say, the worst part is not having a shopping that area.
Same.
I think you know
Just say it.
The color beautiful shopping number, we love it, it's beautiful. And hopefully, we'll get through the state, we'll see what happens.
I think it's probably right. Hi, good voice.
Please themselves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
SD twenty-three eighty, made by Thomas Rosenberg, this is a minor subdivision, two lots to begin with. There will be two lots, should the board actively agree, it's just a minor subdivision, where you line lot lines on High Pressant and Ridge Avenue.
Wasn't this, anybody else submitting?
This one lot, I can let Mr. Pepper, I should question some of that, but this one lot has been adjusted with the neighboring lots several times. I think what we've seen is, this neighbor gave Mr. Rosenberg a couple of feet. This neighbor gave Mr. Rosenberg a couple of feet. This is a new application, another neighbor giving Mr. Rosenberg a couple of feet.
I think it might be the magic of the complex.
Would you like to summarize the barriers, Mr. Stern?
Yes, please.
Okay. As indicated, our J-4 letter, barriers include minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum front door setback, minimum side door setback, as well as an aggregate side door setback. All-street parking relief is required for new lot ninety, point four zero one. I believe that's all the relief, is that correct?
I believe so, many of those is
And a design waiver with respect to the rear dedication along Ridge Avenue, as well as planting trees on all the front doors of both lots.
Add, there are too many stars in this one.
Too many stars?
Not a lot of them are pre-existing. Again, Adam Papter, the applicant, as a kid, yes, this, these lots are, this area last time we bought three dogs, again, as Ali began, one out, he tried to make a nice house for himself. At the time, I guess, where Brian Flaner, you discussed the barriers and technical questions.
Why, can you please write in, do you swear a firm testimony before the board, which is all things that?
I do, Brian Flaner, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have two exhibits today, a copy of the minor subdivision map, A two is a copy of the tax map for the area. As you can see, on A two, it's two separate lots, one narrow, very long one, and it can be one larger lot. A, A one shows that what this application for is to extend the rear line on the larger lot, and the yellow area would now be into the bigger lot, so that Mr. Rosenberg's lot is
What's Mr. Rosenberg's apartment?
The people.
Which one?
It's on High Pressant, it's not on Ridge.
What's the one?
He's on High, he's on High Pressant. This is his house.
There's two houses existing, Mr. Rosenberg would come to a High Pressant, and then an existing on Ridge Avenue. There's gonna be two houses when we're done. Same two houses, we were not proposing houses to be any bigger, what is bigger is to vary ours for Mr. Rosenberg.
And they will look for, Brian, if you can confirm, that's the lot that's on Ridge, if the subdivision is approved, is really coming with performance, really with what the other lots are on Ridge Avenue.
Yes, yes, and you can see from A one, the lots on Long Ridge are consistent with that. This had a unusually deep lot compared to the other lots. You can see that mine is couchwalks, some of the other lots are less than this. There are a couple that are slightly larger, but it's consistent with the neighborhood on Ridge.
Brian, who owns ninety point oh? Mr. Rosenberg? It was on
Ninety, is this the lot ninety? The new ninety?
Yeah.
Maybe Lou? Benji and Lou?
Benji and Lou still?
Well, the records that I have
Yeah, I think you saw it, I think you
I can check.
I've identified Mr. Rosenberg on full And
He didn't advise.
So if we're talking about a one point three acre tract in the R ten zone, where we're gonna have two houses. The R ten zone, you know, normally is eight units per acre, we have two on one point three acres. The according to Terry's report, the zoning that's required for the R ten, which permits single-family homes on ten thousand square foot lots, we need a minimum lot area for new lot ninety point oh one of seven thousand and fifty-five square feet, where ten thousand square feet is required. That's the only new variance. No, that's a new variance, because you see on A one, we're taking the yellow area off the backup lot ninety, and adding it to the other lot. So we now have a lot that the area is less than the ten thousand square feet required by the R ten zone, but it's consistent with all the other lots along Ridge Avenue. The other variants that are listing, listed are all existing conditions. A variance for minimum lot width, forty-one point five feet, where seventy-five is required. An area for minimum front setback, nineteen point five, where thirty is required. A minimum side door setback of ten, of three point four, where ten is required, and a minimum aggregate side setback of fourteen point eight, where twenty-five. All of those are existing variance conditions. The only new one is the reduced lot area, and there's only two people that are gonna know that that lot is smaller. And the owner of each lot, which is Mr. Rosenberg at this point, anybody buying that lot, it's consistent with the area. You can see from the, from A one, there's plenty of backyard area, it's consistent with the other homes in the area. Additionally, we need relief for parking. The existing home on Lot ninety only has two parking spaces, and we're not proposing any new construction, any enlargement, so we're going with the same two parking spaces that are there. We're asking for a design waiver. We're gonna provide an eight point five foot wide road宽en easement along Ridge Avenue. The ordinance asks for a dedication. Nobody else dedicated, if we dedicated, we're the only ones that dedicated. And all I would do would be reduce the lot area and reduce the front setback, this same building is gonna be there. So in order to justify these variances, there are C two variances, where we have to show the benefits outweigh the detriment. And to do that, looking at the master plan in two thousand and seventeen, page seven, division statement, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. To me, allowing a nice, beautiful lot in the area with no adverse impact to all the other lots with the same certainly accomplishes that, the municipal land use law, JSA forty-four fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the Act, encouragement is to action to guide the appropriate usage development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities, concentrations, that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. And certainly, the population density that we're proposing here is much less than any R ten area in Lakewood. And my opinion is that's about it. C two variance, we need to show that relates to a specific piece of property. I don't know of any other one point three acre lot in R ten zone in Lakewood, most people would try to fill a lot more houses in there than that. The applicant certainly wants to have a, a nice, he's got a very fine housing opportunity here. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, and that's what I testified to. Variants can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good, is my testimony, there's absolutely no detriment to the public good. There's two lots, both of these lots have adequate yard areas, adequate light area and open space. The variance will not impair the intent or purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, is my testimony, that it doesn't impair it at all. And the benefits outweigh the detriments, and the benefits are a nice housing lot with a ample rear yard, so that Mr. Rosenberg can continue to, his family live there and be happy, and there are no detriments.
Would you agree with anything else in the report?
Yeah, I, we would comply with
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll ask a motion on this application.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinsberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzle?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you. SD twenty-sixty-three, this is an extension of a minor subdivision, it's been extended a couple of times in our
Hopefully, Lex, we're actually within like thirty to sixty days of getting county rule, beyond brutal.
For three years.
You have no idea.
What's, what is it?
It was survey issues initially, maybe you have to do a lot of wide user apartment, give a lot of
Dedicate or they actually want it, what?
Dedicate, any wide, you do all. So initial survey was not by our firm, and it's a complicated survey, that when the monuments don't match, when you survey, you look for monuments that are around, matching up, monuments don't match what the lot lines are, so things mess up. So the county had their view of what, of like, another company had their view, finally, we put somebody on, it only had two months. I honestly didn't charge, I felt so bad, it's gone on since like four or five years. We think we're at a resolution, where everyone agrees what the lot will be. The county doesn't care about a lot, they can't
That was presented to the board.
The board is, well, the board is, the math is the same question, do you shift it this way or you shift it that way? And that has to do with your dedication to the county.
It was not
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, it's just how you shift it, and it was brutal, I think we're at the end of it, it was beyond Extensions. Give me six months, it's more than enough, I mean, I don't think, if I need one, it's one, I'm not doing this. We'll come back with a cycle, I have something else, please hold it out, I'm not doing this anymore.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinsberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtzle?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, proof.
Okay, so we have two meetings. First of the
July thirtieth?
July twenty-third. Yeah, we have a forum for that?
Yeah, the forum, there are four people here who are on lot one, right?
And they're welcome, July twenty-third?
July twenty-third, I think that's right.
Why do you want to, you want to add it? I don't wanna add it. And I wanna know, make sure that we have a forum on the thirty. Do you guys hear?
Is that a four?
What? Will we have the thirty?
Thirty, I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
We'll be
Two, eight, forty?
I, I agree with you.
Okay, I will. Okay, and Mr. Meyer? Nothing.
I'm sure you're
Okay, so we have five, of whether it's not Mr. Meyer, we have five concerned to be here the thirty. So we should be okay on that.
Okay.
I don't think the twenty-third yet, sometimes, I said I am not sure. Oh, you shouldn't do that.
Very.
So we have four. Just have to speak to
What's the problem, Mr. Kleinsberg?
Mr. Meyer's Okay, so Ali, I would like to ask you, please send out an email, firmly that we have, I know it's the same to show that we have four, the twenty-third and the thirty.
But are we getting to August yet, or yet?
August, how's the agenda look with the first week, the remaining?
We have one that wants it so far, but we have a couple in the works that are gonna, meaning we heard a couple, in August sixth, to open
Yeah, we're not doing it on the same, we canceled
We noticed for the initial July, we didn't officially cancel the August one, but we can cancel August sixth, that's ready for me.
Okay, which, which dates in August that we have?
August sixth, which is, I think, okay with respect for vacations, and then August twenty-seventh, which is before people get back.
I will not
Last year, I think we did have a forum in August, so our, maybe we cannot in one's way.
It's a little bit here, please send out
So do you want me to cancel August sixth?
I don't know.
Or leave it, the board's saying cancel.
I don't Yeah, if you have any school, I have not canceled.
Okay.
If we have a forum.
Is it possible to get to July thirtieth?
July thirtieth has not been application on already.
I think it's ready to do a longer one for the thirtieth.
Well, we get it ready as well.
Yeah, I think we're gonna reach all these, I think it is.
Okay, let's play by here, I don't think we should cancel.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson, how long before, if we want to cancel, we have to notify the board's council. Any laws about that?
Look, there's nothing scheduled on it.
No, there's nothing scheduled, you just don't have The state does not necessarily want website change the agenda, it would be, it would be a problem if we had applications on it.
It would be the same You have to notice that there won't be an application?
No, I think I just put it, I just put it the agenda on website, it's a cancel, no application.
Go to adjourned?
You have like a quarter hour, it's about eight fifty-seven.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
I got zero hours, it's not gonna be fifty-seven. That's all I'm gonna say.
Tomorrow, I said, I said I have four hours, it's not gonna be fifty-seven.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Many more, sorry, no more ones.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Last meeting, one?
Happy night. Application, I wouldn't know how
I'm marking the front.
Good night, everybody. I don't know. You're, you're ready.
Yes, you know why?
First, I, I, I missed the right message. Ellie doesn't believe what we're talking about.
Oh, she asked the words, no, she goes for a gate, at least five, she never hits traffic. What are you talking about?
The last application I turned off on my laptop was New Jersey five one one. I look at it judiciously. There you go. I have only hope.
We get a piece of wood. Your wife's not expecting you.
You know, it's funny, back in the old days,
Oh, did it?
I, I did more at least than I do now. But usually it's like, what, how do you know I'm behind? Well, based on the agenda, ten thirty, eleven thirty. And then once in a while, you get a break, application, pull off, they don't get a warrant, show up at the cost. Did you finish on home? What are you doing home, you're not supposed to be home.
You're something already.
Absolutely right, I'm calling back out. Sorry for the inconvenience. I'll be back at eleven. Well, that was funny, that was the deal, when late nine was there. It's like you could see the sweat forming after nine o'clock, because if he's not up, his wife's gonna kill him.
Does that have to go upstairs?
No, the maintenance factory has
This place gets blocked up in there?
Yeah.
They have all your computers here. How do you think?
I'm like
You're wrong, giving them a rough time?
No, I understand the board's concern, I personally think the board's done a little easy in the past on the applications they
They're denying the application.
Did I, the application, you can give him a rough time? You, you, you basically scrutinize it based on the issues.
The only thing I could disagree with those members, really, was to bring them back with the D O T.
Right, the only thing I ask is if you have to do that recently, and they wanted to send them back to the board, and.
But why should come back? Why should come back with the D O T supersede us?
Well, I just don't like the board thinking that they're a poor condition and then having to not know if that condition will change, that's all. Thank you. Sounds good, thanks. All the animals I can see.